Good evening. It's City Council Joint Meeting with a number of boards tonight, the Recreation Advisory Board first, and the Open Space Advisory Board next, and the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board, known as PPLAB, will be third. We're going to do these all in a row, an hour each, which may be a challenge because there's a lot to talk about, and we're looking forward to it. But before we do anything else, can we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the Lord God.
Thanks. So can we get a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson. Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hafner. Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Good. We know if he's your brother from Ward Three.
He's a grown man. I don't know where he is.
Okay. I haven't heard that he's not going to be here, so he probably will be here. So why don't we start with meeting with the Rec Advisory Board who are already teed up? Do you want to? I can, I can start the introductions before we, and I appreciate all the people who've come to join us tonight. So if we could do introductions, or we just do names, pronouns, what your role is on the committee, if you have some special role, and then your tenure on Rab and various other offices that you've held, maybe in the city over time. I think that's useful for all of us to know, and we'll just go, we'll start with you all. And then we can go around to council, too. You probably know most of us, but in case you don't. Please, please.
Board since its inception, which I forget when that was, six, eight years ago. And prior to that, on the Golf Course Advisory Board and the Task Force for the Rec Center Expansion Project. I don't have the fancy professional credentials that Dick has, but I use these facilities all the time. So I live this stuff. Way back, I was on City Council.
Hi, my name's Dan Brenner. I'm one of the newest members of the Rec Board. I started this January. I'm also fairly recent to Louisville. I've been here for about a year, so just excited to be on the board.
Okay. I'm Lisa Norgard. I'm Chair, and I've been on this board since its inception as well, so six or eight years ago. Prior to that, I was on the Golf Course Advisory Board. I'm passionate about all things recreation, golf, bathrooms on the front five. I have to just put that in there. And am passionate about our community and am happy to serve.
For the Recreation and Golf Board.
Good evening. Are we going to, we'll get through this three times. I just realized we're going to do this three times. I know. Adam, yeah, yeah. I could be. Sometimes I wish. Adam Blackmore, Director, Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Golf. Golf doesn't fit in the acronym very well, but don't want to forget it. I've been with the city almost three years now, the entire time in this role.
Good evening. I'm Diana Langley, the City Manager, and this is day seven on the job. And I can't think of a better way to spend my Tuesday evening, so thank you.
Deb Fahy, I'm on City Council. This is my sixth year. Been on for five and a half. And before that, oh, gosh, I started at the Senior Center. I was Meal Site Coordinator in 2004, I think, or '05, somewhere around there. I've been on all kinds of boards, the History Foundation, the Historic Preservation Commission, just hanging out.
Mayor, I started, I was specially elected back in '14 and have served two terms, part of two terms, I guess, on the council, and then ran for mayor about a year and a half ago and was elected. And I'm very glad to be here, too.
Thank you. Barbara Hamilton, Ward Three Councilmember. I joined council in 2023, so I'm rounding out my third year. I am actually a genetic counselor by training. I work in biotech, and I'm a council member by night. I don't know, something like that, right?
Josh Cooperman, I'm one of the council members for Ward One. This is my first year on council. And for the four years before that, I served on our Sustainability Advisory Board.
Caleb Dickinson, City Council, Ward One. I got elected in 2019 with Deb, straight off the Historic Preservation Commission. And as it changes this conversation specifically, I've been a soccer coach for 25 years as, by night, my night job, and love the Coal Creek Golf Course. You know, I'm not a good golfer, but I enjoy going there. And so I use a lot of the, a lot of the facilities as well.
Okay. I'm Judy Kern, City Council for Ward Two, which is actually where the Rec Center is located. And I've lived here for my entire adult life, which is the last 30 years.
We were thinking that you would cover purpose and expectations.
What we've done in the last two years, some as some of you know, we've done the last couple years is we've decided to meet with the boards and commissions. Typically, I hit in a couple of them on a Tuesday night and going over work plan items and kind of having a discussion about things that are going well, things that can go better, and to talk a little bit about our priorities and some priorities that maybe you might recommend. And, you know, the, the boards and commissions, one thing we, we are emphasizing and have been is the importance of the Boards and Commissions Advisory Rule. That's pretty much what the Boards and Commissions are doing. I think every so often, there is a sort of a distinction, at least that I draw, and I think, I think it's drawn in our ordinances between advice and advocacy. That is to say, we're looking for recommendations and, and suggestions, I think. But the Boards and Commissions are really hopefully going to send up recommendations to council to be considered and acted on. And we're going to do some things this year. I think that'll be maybe a little bit different than last year. We're going to encourage each board to send somebody to council meeting, the council meetings. We can talk about that at some point to try to get a little better sense of what we're doing as the year goes on. And we probably are going to have maybe more than one meeting with Boards and Commissions per year to kind of check in a little bit. So now are you, all right, jump in.
All right. Well, again, welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight, and we just want to reiterate thank you to the Recreation Advisory Board. Again, we know it's, you're dedicating your time. It's a volunteer position, and we want to make sure that we're using, thoughtfully using your time. So thank you. Next slide, please, Jenny.
And one thing I forgot is I think what we're doing initially is getting, getting some public comment even before getting into
Okay.
things. So if, I'm sorry for that. We are having public comment. If you're interested in making a comment tonight, you can speak for up to three minutes. We're going to do this in advance or right at the beginning of our meeting with each of the advisory boards we're meeting with tonight, and if you have something to provide, you can talk up to three minutes. Just give us your name and where you're from. You don't have to tell us where you live in Louisville or elsewhere, just where you're, where you're living now. And if you have somebody else here who is willing to cede their time, you can talk for up to six minutes. Don't have to talk that long. But if you've got something to say, all you need to do is still out a card and give it to the clerk. I don't know whether there's any public comment or not. And if you, if you're going to be here for the others, you'll get another opportunity. We good? All right. Sorry.
All right. Thank you. And with having new people on staff, new people on the board, new council members, we thought it'd be a good idea to review the role of the advisory board. You have great memories. This board is the newest board, and it was formed in 2017. Jenny, next slide, please. So this board, per the municipal code, up there shows the general duties of the board as well as powers and duties. So the members of the board shall serve an advisory capacity to City Council and shall have principal responsibility for matters related to recreation and golf programs and facilities. A next slide, please, Jenny. By resolution, the board is to assist city staff and council in determining the community's needs and desires for recreation and golf facilities. Advise staff and council on maintenance development and redevelopment of recreation and golf facilities. Advise on capital and operating budget as it relates to recreation and golf. Again, advise on financial policies related to cost recovery for recreation program areas, on medium and long range planning for recreation and golf facilities, and programming of facility usage for recreation and golf. Next slide, please. Just a reminder that all city boards are subject to the Colorado Open Records Act and Open Meetings Rule and the Home Rule Charter. If you need any additional information about that, we can provide that, and then rules of procedure in place for all boards covering meeting civility, general rules, meeting requirements, and more. And then one of the projects that staff looks forward to working on over this next year is updating the bylaws, so there's more standardization across all of the boards. Next slide, please. So with this, the 2025 Council Work Plan, slide, next slide, please, focuses on four priorities: economic vitality, core services, safety, and affordable housing, all of those under two lenses, including equity, diversity, and inclusion, and environmental sustainability. At this point, I'm going to hand the presentation over to Lisa, but I just want to note that the, the Recreation Advisory Board, there's a slide in here that talks about projects that you're working on in accordance with the Council Work Plan, and it doesn't have specific bullets, but you are, per your review of the comprehensive plan and then also the Pro's Long Range Plan, you are participating on things that forward and advance the council's work priorities. So at this point, Lisa, I'm going to turn it over to you to take over the presentation.
Chris, was there any public that wanted to speak before?
No.
Okay. Okay. Mayor, council, and Mayor, council, and staff, thank you for having us tonight. I'll start with our highlights. I'll kind of just read through each of these different slides. Oh, next slide. Okay, all right. All right. Our highlights, council-approved projects last year was the approval of the conversion of the inline skate rink into pickleball courts and continuing offering hybrid classes along with the purchase of new equipment at the Rec Center for the hybrid fitness classes. Thank you. Improvements to the bocce ball courts at Memory Square and Community Park have been well received. The procurement of a new golf cart fleet at Coal Creek, which we'll be using soon, or they're already using out there. The continued collaboration with PPLAD, our subcommittee continues to meet and work towards some of our goals with the recreation amenities. The ongoing maintenance of our tennis courts, addressing the cracks, uneven areas, and waiting for safe tennis play has been a huge highlight. Thank, thank you, staff. Crack repairs completed at the skate park. New tennis backer board was installed at Centennial East Courts. Mission Green Tennis Court Reconstruction was complete. And the new court path installed on Hole 13 at Coal Creek Golf Course, and the parking lot improvements happened last year at the Coal Creek Golf Course. And so those were some highlights. And so, Diane, is this where you're talking about, we're trying to figure out our related?
Yes. So this is where you are participating in review of the comp plan, the Pro's Long Range Plan. And so even though it might not be directly tied to a specific project.
Because we were thinking, we didn't know what the amenities on the work plan, we as a, as a board, we're trying to figure out where we fit in.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving on to the next slide. All right. Our proposed work plan priorities, not included on City Council's adopted plan, are adding a fifth tennis court in adjacent to the existing courts at Centennial Courts, building the new clubhouse at the golf course, as the current one is in disrepair. And I know you guys have had the pro forma that you had in advance to read or review. Continue to identify land for the soccer multipurpose fields, which has still been on our radar. It's needed. Continue to support all maintenance projects. Highly recommend maintaining what we currently have, which I think we are all in agreement on for that. Alignment, next slide, alignment with the Recreation and Golf Department of Work Plans. We've had the completion of the financial feasibility study for the golf course clubhouse in 2022. The strategic, the strategic plan, the completion of the golf course strategic plan in 2021. The creation, the creation of the outdoor rec amenities with the PPLAB still continuing. And we continue to work closely as a board and with staff to ensure the long-term sustainability and quality of our recreational facilities. We provide input and feedback for the comp plan and the pros and provide board input into the Pro's Long Range Plan, which is where I had that. Okay. Next slide, council guidance. The one question that, for anything, let's see, I'm going to kind of, opportunity for discussion in boards, so this where we want to have our discussion. So one of the questions we had, anything else the board just considered related to work plan? We wanted to strengthen the communication and collaboration between our board and, and council in an effective way. And it sounds like you're addressing that with having a direction. We'd like, if there's something you need, the advisory board, or you're hearing from your constituents, that there's something, an amenity or a service, we'd like to work together on providing recommendations and advice on that. Council, we, council guidance, we always would appreciate any council guidance on any of our non-work plan items. And then in considerations, we had on the purview of our advisory board to council, we just wanted to be sure that we ensure adequate infrastructure makes it into the comp plan as we move forward with those discussions and that plan. And that's all I had, or that's all we had for our slides. Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
I was just going to say, should we let Angie introduce herself? I can ask a question. Sure. I was curious, in your, your joint subcommittee with Parks and Lands, Public Landscaping, are there particular focuses around, of those discussions around outdoor amenities, or is it?
Yes. So our, our direction there has been combining what Parks is doing as with the Rec Board, and they seem to be dovetailing into the same tennis, multipurpose fields. Golf course is more focused on rec, but we do talk about that in our subcommittee meetings. Tennis courts, pickleball is a topic of discussion along with any other thing that might come up. We haven't had anything else besides the bocce ball improvements that come up within that subcommittee meeting. Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to get a sense for. And then a little question. So at Centennial, where is the idea to add the fifth tennis court? I don't know. Can you give us a sense for?
I don't. Yeah, yeah.
It would be on the west side of the existing courts. There's the, you know, the two further east, and then there would be one single one to the west side. It's been many years, but there was a sort of a design done, and that's where it was recommended to put a fifth one.
Okay. And there's, like, I mean, there's a hill, but I guess that's still, there's level, levelish ground at the bottom of that.
Correct.
Okay, cool. And then maybe just one other little question. So one thing on the City Council Work Plan is the downtown vision plan. And I don't know if, how much recreation has been looped in, or the board has been looped into that, but I mean, the ice rink is, you know, is contracted out, but that might be something that the board is interested in weighing in on. So, you know, how, how the ice rink might continue to be incorporated with, you know, what we, what we do to the, the streetscapes down there coming up. Just a thought.
Were you, were you thinking of a permanent or still just have the rec centers maintaining it as, or running it as they do from? No, were you thinking of something different down there?
Well, I mean, I think it's, I don't think, I don't think it's settled, but, you know, I guess there's a question of, you know, when we redo the streetscape along Front, will we still have a space to allow for an ice rink down there or not? Is that what residents would like to see happen or, or not? And I, I think those discussions haven't been finalized yet, so.
Background on the current situation there.
So with the ice rink in particular, we, we have had a contractor running, running that program. As far as the downtown revisioning, I have just been looped into that group, have just sat in on one meeting so far. But I can say that with all options that have been presented, there, there is still space being identified where an ice rink could go.
Just curious if, if you have done any work with PPLAB or if it's already planned to work on the, the Redtail Ridge area that's, you know, planned, obviously, parks and public land, but recreation, that's, that's an opportunity for pickleball. It's an opportunity for soccer. It's an opportunity for lots of things. Are you guys currently, you know, brainstorming that space or feel like you're being tasked in that space? Or is that something that has not come, come to you at this point? Yeah, I mean, from, from my perspective, there are a lot of conceptual drawings, a lot of like, wouldn't this be fun? But it's mostly presented by a developer saying, the, these are things that, talking to the city and otherwise, like, this is a concept for this area that is being dedicated to the city, but ultimately, it's up to us, right? We, we could decide that we don't want any park there at all, or we could decide that the park is just something to look at, or it's swing sets and splash pads, or it's soccer fields. Like, we have so many options that are up to us, and I would certainly think that that, that area is a space in which, as we get further in the conversation, and so I was trying to stick it, to stick with questions later in this conversation. I'd love to, you know, talk about, you know, where we can go in that direction as far as, you know, our work plan, your work plan, and if that part of, of our community is something that we, we agree is, is right for, for, for the Rec Advisory Board to be looking into. So I'll save some of my comments for later, but I was just curious where you were and not very, not very far into that.
No, that would be fabulous.
The earliest iteration of Redtail Ridge, like way back, we had a lot of conversations then about what opportunities were there, primarily multipurpose fields because of the space. But then, since it's gone through a lot of changes, we haven't been back into the picture, but also I know the post-master plan is coming along. And so I kind of thought we'd be involved at that point with it, too.
So a couple of options to.
There was a lot of discussion about.
Yeah, sorry. The, the issue of the microphones is that anyone who's online can't hear you. So obviously, we can all hear in the room, but.
Right. So this, my concern, and obviously, we would need to get some information from the City Council, is that early on, when we were talking about this, we were actually told as a board that we were to keep ourselves very distant from all of those types of discussions. And so I think we really do need very clear direction as a board as to what we can and cannot do, because we were basically told that we weren't even supposed to read the newspaper about things that had, had to do with Redtail Ridge. And I don't want to feel like we are not doing our job, but I also don't want to do anything that count, the council or the ethical rules would say that we can't do.
Can we get an introduction?
Managed to somehow pull this off being late last year, too, so hopefully I have a reputation. My name is Douglas Minter, and I'm currently serving in the capacity of Secretary for the Recreational Advisory Board, so apologies for being late this evening. Thank you.
Our final member is in high school and has a baseball game tonight, so he knows.
He's recreating competitively. Yes.
Thank you. So I'll make one statement. Thank you for all the work, the volunteer hours. I really do appreciate it, and that the community does as well. The question is, I'm supposed to stick to that right now. Do you guys have any plans? You talked about communications, but I was thinking specifically about public engagement to get the public noticed when you're going to have discussions around particular topics of interest, like, I mean, maybe if it is something specific about the tennis courts and notice would go up at the tennis courts, for example, especially the Centennial ones, for the people who don't go to the Rec Center and play on the north side of town. Do you guys have any ideas or plans in how to maybe? Do you guys have any ideas or plans in how to maybe engage? Because the, a lot of newer members of our community may not be aware of all of the boards and commissions and how the process works. It's not usually handed out with the realtors, I think, when they buy houses. So I was curious to see if you have plans for that.
This time, we haven't really thought about that. We try to, just in our normal social discussions with our friends and our groups and our leagues and whatnot, we try to communicate, our meetings are posted on all of the city websites and where they're supposed to be posted. So past that, I haven't thought about, I don't think we have thought about engaging, because the big discussion is pickleball. So, and trying to get that, we've had our meetings are posted, they're public, so we could use help on how to get that engagement out. We're happy to do that. We just.
Yeah, so through the mayor. You know, we have an item that's going to be coming before council next Tuesday related to the pickleball courts, and this is a conversation, this is a question that was brought up by one of the council members, is how can we better notify the public about this? And so Adam and I had a conversation today about not only can we post signs at the proposed project's location, or whatever it is, but we can also do more in terms of putting agenda items out via social media, identifying, you know, posting flyers at the Recreation and Senior Center, and evaluating if we have enough time noticed, we can put it in utility bill inserts. There's a lot of ways that we can advertise items that are becoming before all of the boards and the council as well, so that the public can be, to the extent they want to, be engaged and learn about what boards are considering, and then provide that feedback. So definitely lesson learned on the pickleball courts, and going forward, we will be evaluating better and improved ways to notify the public.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One more, kind of an open ended question. I guess I'm wondering, like, as a board, what do you hope we get out of the Pro's Master Plan?
Yes. I'll say a lot.
Yes, so this is more of a high level response rather than specific action items. But something, at least from my perspective, that has made this community so special is how well utilized all the recreation services are. And that's both a blessing and a curse, because it means we're kind of at capacity for a lot of these recreation services. And I know the long range planning anticipates population growth. So something that we see as very important is accounting for expanding infrastructure for recreation services commensurate with the anticipated population growth. And we'd love to, you know, have city councils, uh, see the council's input on how we can best advise as to how to accomplish those goals. So I think from our perspective, just understanding that there likely will be a population growth and what strain that may place on the recreation services is a key priority for us.
If you want.
And I would also say that we have to be realistic about the things that we can and cannot do. Because one of the questions, I mean, there, there's two things that have been rumbling around in my head, is that we have constantly said, and we had a very large discussion about the sustainability of the golf course building. And of all the buildings in the entire city, that golf course building is the least energy efficient. I hate golf, I can tell you absolutely, I hate it, I hate everything about it, but I also am pragmatic enough to realize it is a great asset for this community. And if the golfers go to that clubhouse and they don't like it, and they don't want to pay the money that we want to invest in that, then it's a problem. And if that golf, and we have, the whole time I've been on this committee, we have always said that is our top priority for a capital improvement. It is very disappointing, and I know several of our members who went off the committee went off being disappointed that we discussed that ad nauseam. And we still haven't gotten any closer to actually doing that. We always have the money to do a study to say that that has to be done. We never have the money to do anything beyond the study that says this has to be done. So that is kind of a frustration for me, is talking about that every single year that I've been on this committee and constantly being told, yes, it's really a problem, yes, it needs to be fixed. No, it's never going to get fixed, or it's going to get fixed next year in Jerusalem, right? I mean, it just, it never happens. So the other thing is being realistic about what we have and can have is when we had the conversation about people doing presentations about comprehensive plans, I said, is there any piece of property that the city owns that we could turn into realistic soccer fields? People told me no, but they still wanted to say that is a need. Well, you cannot do things that you cannot do. And so I would really like to not have to think about things that we cannot do, right? If we don't have land for a soccer field, then we either need to buy the land for a soccer field, or we have to just say we don't have it, and we have to figure out something else. So I'd rather not spend a lot of time doing things in a direction where we know that it just can't happen, right? We cannot make most of our houses in Louisville affordable. Please don't tell me to try and do that, because it just can't happen, right? It's kind of that same thing.
And thanks, and I think talking about the golf course is something we should be doing shortly. One of the things I wanted to ask, just as a as a question, is what what steps has the board taken, if any, with respect to the comp plan process? I mean, has it been mostly individuals having interactions? Have you have you done more than that? Do you have plans to do more than that? Because we're, you know, we're coming to the sort of conclusion of that process. And we're encouraging everybody and his brother and sister to be a part of that and to provide, you know, ideas and and suggestions about that. So has there been any of that, and we're going to come back to?
So specific to the comp plan, we have discussed areas and needs within our board meeting. I know several of us have gone to the individual, when the consultants have done their outreach. Many of us have done that, but it's specific to putting anything out there in the comp plan.
Well, our last meeting, we had the planning director, who? He came to our last meeting, was really helpful, and kind of went through the key elements of the comp plan and and got our feedback about some of our concerns or input, and like Dan said, one of the things we kind of took away was it contemplates growth, and we want to be sure that we are also contemplating that in the recreation facilities. So we did have a really good session just last month within there. So hopefully more opportunities along those lines.
And I think this could be an area where it would be very helpful to get guidance from the council and how we could be most helpful, because we want to be active participants in this process, but we also don't want to be just, you know, shouting into the void and spinning our wheels for nothing. It's kind of along lines of what Angie was saying. So I think any guidance that council could provide as to what would be most helpful for us could make the process more efficient.
Should we, as the void, speak back, is that?
Exactly, that's the goal.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, so we're engaged, and we would like to be more engaged, if that's the direction you would like us to to take.
I think if you feel like you've gotten out to Jeff, the, you know, sort of concerns, board concerns as a group, that's good. I certainly encourage all of you as individuals to continue to have that. I think the other thing is when the comp plan comes out, there will be a lot of action taken with reference to it. And that's what it's designed to do, is to to help us, to help guide us in decisions that we might make on zoning and other kinds of land use issues. So I think it will be very important, and I, I think that's something on that I I didn't see on your work plan piece, that probably would be a good thing to put on there, because that's a long term process, as my city manager reminds me. But it's also something that that we really can use that kind of input going forward. Because it's, I think sometimes it's like, get the comp plan done, and everybody breathes a big sigh of relief, but it's really, and I think with this council, very much a pretty sigh of relief, take a night off, and then get to work the next day. And I know staff generally does that anyway, so I I think that's a place where you can certainly be, be very, very helpful going forward.
Yeah, I first want to reiterate what Judy said, that I really appreciate all the time and effort and expertise that you guys bring to the Recreation Board, and giving us advice that we couldn't get without paying exorbitant amounts of money. And so thank you for all of your time serving on the board. My question is more for you. What would you like to see change in the relationship between the advisory board and the council? How do you think we could have a more effective relationship?
As it was said, that it's in the future, we probably will have a Recreation Advisory Board member to come into council meetings. I think we'd like council members to come to our meetings to get a full understanding of what we're dealing with as well. I think it's a two way street here, and it'd be beneficial to all of us if that's okay. I don't know whether it's legally appropriate or not for you to come.
Well, and I can just say, when, when we were having a regular councilperson attend, and I know that Councilperson Fei, he has come quite often, and it's been very appreciated. But I was thinking about this today, I realized that being on city council is a huge suck of your time. And that it is a great, huge responsibility. But for me, having a councilperson come to the meetings, when I was on the Cultural Council and now on the RAB Board, it was so nice to have someone from council come and check in once a month to tell us what was going on. Because it made me feel much more connected to what was going on in the city. And it also helped me, and I think other people on the board, resolve questions without waiting a whole year to come and talk to you all. So for me, I think if it were possible, or if it was okay with the, with whoever bosses your legal team around, I think it would be very nice for councilpeople to, if they can, come and and participate in those meetings, because it's not only us giving you information, it's you giving us information, which allows us to better communicate what's going on at city council too. Because I think a very fundamental problem in our entire country right now is that people have no idea why government exists. They don't understand what y'all do, they don't, they don't value it, they don't know what's going on half the time. And the only thing that they are told is that government is there to make your life terrible. And that is so not true. But without that communication, I think it's very difficult for people to appreciate the incredible knowledge that people have in government, the incredible sacrifices that civil servants make to be part of government, and how important it is to have a functioning government.
I guess a couple of things, I want to, I do want to get to the issue of the golf course, because I know people worked really hard on that too. I can pretty much tell you, we have shifted from having liaisons to the, to the committees, that is, council members going to the committees. And part of that is the, if you will, the ambitious work plans that we have come up with, right? And I think a good functioning, you know, and we, we decided this on council a couple of years ago, that the best way, and it's not the only way, by any means, but the best way to to work that relationship is to have liaison from the, the staff be able to route information both ways, and then to meet from time to time in meetings like this, and as I said, there may be others. The idea of having a person or inviting a person from the boards to come to the meetings, I think gives the, will give the each board and commission better sense of what's actually happening up the, you know, what we're dealing with, because one of the things that you'll probably hear a little bit in the next fifteen minutes is the competing priorities that we have, and how we're trying, and if, and clearly imperfectly to try to address that. I, I want to say too, before we get into this discussion, I really appreciate all of the work that you do. I know that there's a huge number of hours that are spent. And you don't have to do that, and you're doing it. And some of you have done it for a long, long time, and that is something that we're, we're, you know, both trying to encourage people to come up with ideas, as well as help you to support the council. And that's where this, the idea of advice is different than advocacy. We've gotten some some groups in the community that are really straight advocacy groups, because it's that they don't have to worry about public meetings and all of that kind of stuff. There's some good parts about doing that, but they can kind of give a full throated you know, could support whatever kinds of partial or positions that they'd like before us and push those things. Here, you're bounded a little bit by what the council work plan is, which is, and I, we recognize that can sometimes be, be frustrating.
Chris, can I just say something on that? So I appreciate it, and I look forward, we look forward to the, the new direction. But in the past, when we have had a council liaison, there, they would take any of our monthly meetings back and discuss with, with you all. It seemed to be very effective. And there was good discussion, dialogue going between where council is on a particular project versus where our advisory board is. So, and that benefit, it was very helpful to have a liaison.
And I, I appreciate that, I really do. I think that the, we're going to try to improve on the process that we have right now. And part of it is that, again, without going into great detail, that the liaisons, I think, were expected to come back and be advocates for the committees that they were on. And that really was not the role of council. There were some times where it was not yours, but there were times when council members were going, and they weren't really getting much information. It was mostly, they were presenting to those board members as private citizens. And although a lot of private citizens in Louisville who would love to talk with the council member every month, but there wasn't really an awful lot of that going on, and it really wasn't necessarily fair. The other thing is just a question of time.
No, I appreciate that.
I think these are things, I don't want to squash that discussion, because I do know when that changed, and it largely changed in 2019. And then it was noticed a lot during COVID. There was some, I don't know, sadness, irritation that went along with that. So this is an effort to try to.
Okay. I had no idea.
And do it better, but I'm not going to say that it's perfect, and I think we need to have that ongoing dialogue. That's one of the reasons why these meetings are so helpful.
Yes, that would be in a very effective way.
Yeah, I really appreciate you kind of outlining the logic behind it, because we did feel a void when Deb stopped coming. And also, some of the steps that you're taking, I think where we are and where we get a little frustrated is we don't always know, like, if we're going down the wrong path, if you will, like, we can get all excited about something and thinking we have the best idea in the world, and then it just lands flat, because there's no appetite on council for, for many reasons. And we don't often know what those reasons are. So if we had some mechanism to communicate, like, yeah, great idea. yeah, great idea, guys, but like, let's just put that on the back burner because blah, blah, blah. That I think would help alleviate a lot of the frustrations you're hearing and we kind of vent to ourselves, you know, because we are not getting good byway communication. So it's, it helps us also keep focused on what's important to you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think the, the staff liaison is going to be critical. I mean, that is part of our hope is that that information will, at least in part, bubble up to council and come down to you with staff work. But I, what I really, if I could, I, I want to get to one of those issues that I think you all really want to talk about because we have only a limited amount of time before our next meeting.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
I just want to also thank the staff liaisons because they're kind of in the middle in this whole thing and they, they get it from both sides. So I really appreciate what they do. I mean, Kathy and Adam and, and all the staff that go to these meetings and report back to us what you've been doing and report to you what we're working. So thank you to staff.
The, the work that was done on the pro forma on the on the golf course, we really appreciate. That was very helpful. And I know that there are people who've been very interested in this and I, I think the council obviously wants to hear a little bit more about that. I, I think, and I don't, I have learned not to speak for my brothers and sisters on council here. I, I think what I can tell you from my own perspective is that right now, we've been focused on those items that are on the work plan. We take those pretty seriously, very seriously, and try to hew to those as, and it's hard because we've got things coming at us that sometimes go to come at, at different places. But that's part of it. Part of it is the work plan. Part of it is the comp plan that we've been working on this year. Part of it is the budget. Capital projects typically bubble up slowly in city budget. There's a lot of reasons for that. And this is one kind of project that would be an enormous amount of work for staff. I know it may not seem as critical. And I have learned over time that everything we do, even when it's I mean, pretty much everything we do and create is gotta have staff involvement. I think we've also got our citizen survey that we look at pretty carefully over time. This has not necessarily come to the fore in that. Doesn't mean it won't or can't. I think I'd like to hear from the rest of the council members. I think it's one of those things that perhaps, you know, things are not gonna happen on this this year. I can pretty much tell you that because of, because we already have a work, work plan set. Is it something that we may want to consider, among other things? I think it's a tough choice. There is a lot, there are a lot of competing capital requests right now. And this one did come up in the budget and it didn't kind of pass through. It was, it was up, it was in the list of budget items to consider. So that's just me. But I'm interested in my fellow council members, what their thoughts are about this. Mayor Proton.
Yeah, I'm, I'm feeling the, the time crunch. I'm, I'm, you know, personally, you know, I think it's a really important conversation and we have a lot to talk about. And I'm, and I'm noticing the time and trying to figure out how to encapsulate this. You know, I, I think, I think the golf course, it's interesting when I think of rec advisory board, right? I think of the golf course as recreation and, and the golfing at the course, right? And, and getting out into nature and, and and exercising and golfing and playing a sport. And I think that's where the, you know, recreation piece is really tied in. I think what we're maybe missing, right, is we're talking about like collaboration, having all the, you know, board chairs come and meet at the same time and talk about what is the collaboration of the golf clubhouse with other parts of the city? Because as an avid terrible golfer, I don't care much for or about a clubhouse. I spend four and a half hours not in the clubhouse. And I spend five to zero to thirty minutes in the clubhouse as someone who recreates at the golf course. But the clubhouse itself could serve so many needs in this community as a gathering space, as a place for this meeting right now, as a place for, you know, visitors to host events. We, we lack event space. Right? And so if we think of it more globally as a city building that could potentially house, you know, Adam, you could move your office there if you wanted to, if it was really nice, right? So like thinking about all office use, public use, all the different things that we can get out of it, I think that's a really interesting conversation. Improving the recreation at the golf course, you know, twenty, thirty million dollars to in, in, increase the recreation of the golf course, it feels complicated for me, right? It's, it's a lot of, a lot of money for something that's auxiliary to recreation. Whereas a, you know, multi-use field and other things like that, I think, are more entirely, right? And so the piece that's interesting for me about the golf course compared to other things is when you talk about the fifth tennis court, there is zero conversation about being paid back for that court. We're never gonna recoup the investment into that fifth court unless we have like a, you know, credit card swipe at the gate. Well, at the golf course, it's a different situation, right? We can actually charge people to golf there. And one of my concerns with pro forma is, you know, if it means charging people a lot more money because it's a much nicer course, if it were to mean charging people more money because it's a nicer course, you know, well, that's, that's, that's tough. If it means we're gonna generate a lot of income on things that have nothing to do with golf, why is it a rec advisory conversation, right? It's, it's a city, a public events space. We're gonna have a million dollars of restaurant income. Well, that's kind of the golfers, that's something else. It's not just golfers. We're gonna have, I think there's a million dollars in, in income for weddings, right? That, that has nothing to do with recreation. So I'm, I'm not saying, I'm poo-pooing, I'm saying, are there other ways in which we can tie this conversation into other parts of what we're doing, economic vitality and other things that make the, the golf club more about the whole city and fit within our, you know, plans, our work plan, you know, like looking at the comp plan, looking at things like, how does a brand-new clubhouse fit into the, the whole thought process of the city in the next twenty years, right? And what, what is our, what is our city gonna look like twenty years from now? And we don't have some spaces we might need and how we, how can we collaborate with, maybe it's P-Plaid, maybe it's arts, maybe it's economic vitality, right? And like, what, what are those other pieces? And so that I don't talk multiple times, I, I'm just, I, again, I know what the plan is, but with, with inline skating and pickleball, we're not gonna, we're gonna have a robust conversation on next Tuesday about that. So we're not gonna have that conversation tonight. But what I wanted, the piece I wanted to say tonight is thank you so much for your work on that. Thank you so much for listening to the residents and this dire need for public access to the largest growing sport in our country. And we're the only city around here without public courts and trying to solve that. Forget about the solution, trying to solve that, listening and trying to, trying to come up with that. And, you know, I think it's difficult because we, we did come to a decision a year ago. We did reaffirm that dis- decision several times. Then we went to the public and said, congratulations, pickleball courts are coming. It's like, whoa, wait, what? And so there were lots of opportunities for public engagement and we're hearing maybe that public engagement wasn't good enough. That's not your fault. That's not your fault. You guys listened to the public, you brought something, it went through that process. I appreciate that. That doesn't mean it was perfect and doesn't mean people aren't upset. But I think as we look to readdress it next Tuesday, it's looking at, like, what was the negative feedback? What is the positive feedback? What is the right step forward? But your work was important and it was validated by this body, a version of this body several times. And so thank you for that work and we will continue to do that work ourselves and work with you on that. And what that looks like, I don't know, but, but we have a lot of people who are excited about inline skating. That's great. And we have a lot of people that are excited about pickleball. That's great. And we're all trying to figure out how to, how to make everybody happy. And that's hard, right? It's hard if you have limited resources to make everyone happy. But I just, I, like I said, we're not gonna get to the meat of that conversation. But the process, I just want to thank you for the work you did in that process. And I'm sorry that a year after all those decisions were making, Facebook went insane and then we all had to readdress it a year later. I wish Facebook went insane a year earlier when we were having the conversation. But it didn't then. It, 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 it went, it went bonkers a year later. So anyways, I think that's all I have unless more comes up.
Oops. Sorry. The issue of the golf course and the golf, or I'm sorry, the, the clubhouse, sorry. So I, I'd like to hear from other council members because I think that's one of the things you're wanting, yeah.
I'll be very brief. I very much agree with what Caleb said about the, the clubhouse, you know, if we could find a way to make that into a community space that served multiple needs, I think that would be amazing.
Since this is the first time I've spoken since you all have presented, I will say thank you for your work. Very much appreciated. And as it relates to what we're calling the clubhouse, I am in line with the ideas that were thrown out here of thinking bigger picture, more globally for the community. How can a facility not only serve the purposes of the users of the golf course, but also provide additional utility for the city and the residents?
I'll just reiterate what's already been said. I think the whole idea of making it a community center rather than only for the golf course makes a lot of sense and would free up a lot more funding from different sources to accomplish that.
Thanks. I, I actually agree that the clubhouse and the golf course in general is a really major asset to the city. Whether you play golf or you hate golf, it maintains the quality of life in Louisville, maintains property values in Louisville, maintains, it's, it's one of the big things that differentiates us from a lot of other communities that we do have such an awesome public golf course. When I did play golf, I knew that. But I agree, the expansion or the renewing of the golf course, I think in addition to, like, like everyone was saying, making it more energy efficient because it leaks like a sieve, right, with air and stuff. But it's an opportunity to provide the whole community with something that we're missing. And I will add, from a golf perspective, it gets people there and they're like, oh my gosh, this is part of what I pay for. This is part of my community when I live in North End and don't see the golf course every day because I don't live in Coal Creek Ranch. And that's something that would be really nice, right? Maybe people go to the rec center, they still don't see the golf course. And it's a huge expense and it's an amazing component of our community. If it was all open space, I bet everybody who lived here would know where that was and how to get to it. Because it's a golf course, they don't. And I think making this twenty, thirty million dollar investment really accessible to more people for more reasons is the best reason to say yes to it. I also like the idea, and I have no idea legally how we work on this, is doing like other communities or clubhouses do, fundraise. Bricks that are ten thousand, you guys have been saying this forever, right? Bricks that are ten thousand dollars or a hundred thousand and their name is on it. We, they, the community members, the people who want this can actually help pay for this. And I think we can find a way to make it happen so that in less than five years, we could be realizing it.
It's seven oh five.
Could I make one quick comment?
Sure.
And I know Dick wants to too, because he owns the pro forma. But I really, really appreciate your insight and I want to say personally, I agree one hundred percent, like, our idea of this is not just a clubhouse, but a community asset. That's always been our intention. We've had long conversations on our board about fundraising and what opportunities we have. So I guess my question as a final thing is, where do we go from here? I also hear it's not in the budget. We know it's not in the budget, but the budget is a long time coming. So how do we get it in line? And what are, what are, what's the process? How can we keep the momentum, what little momentum we have? How can we get that going?
I'm, I'm gonna lean for process. I'm gonna lean on Kathy to talk turkey with you maybe in your next meeting. But we're getting, you know, we're getting ready for the second year second year of a two-year budget. We just passed a two-year budget. But she can describe how that works. It's a good time to be providing information there. And one of the things we're going to be doing as a council is evaluating our, our work plan in May. And we're gonna start talking about our work plan for two thousand twenty-six. And this, this topic may be something that we can deal with then as we're running it against a bunch of other priorities, right? And that may be a good time. I think one last piece is just to comment, I, I agree with the comments that have been made about, about community benefit. This may be very ripe for a public-private partnership. And because there's a lot of, there's a lot of, and, and that is way beyond the scope of what we can do tonight. But it may be something that can be discussed over time. It's not gonna happen really quick. I mean, I sense the, the, the impatience and we're all, we're all impatient here, trust us, all of the people around this. But at any rate, I want to give you the last word and then I'm gonna have to move to the next. Okay. So back in March of, or May of twenty-two, we were working with a consultant to develop feasibility study for this, which included a complete building program identifying every space. We encouraged them to create spaces that could be multi-use for the whole community. One of our thoughts was, could we do something with fields in conjunction with the golf course as well, so that we'd be fulfilling many needs around the community. But when we looked at that, we thought, well, you know, fields are pretty expensive, as is the twenty million dollar clubhouse or whatever it's going to be. And the difference is the clubhouse, the golf course is an enterprise fund, right? Well, as I understand it, if the numbers are right, an enterprise fund can float a bond on its own without having to have a vote in the community. Okay, so we put this pro forma together to see if we, looking at the revenue that the golf course has generated over past years plus potential future revenue based on the, the facilities that we put within the golf course, like meeting rooms and being able to hold weddings, receptions, corporate outings, all these different kinds of things, which generate quite a bit of revenue. The bottom line on, on all this is, is that we would be able to pay for the development of this project at the golf course based on the revenue that we're taking in and still have revenue left over for capital improvements, which the city has been paying for, such as mowers and, and other kinds of improvements. But this could all be on the golf course and we wouldn't have to ask taxpayers for any money. That's what this is about. Which is different than trying to do a capital improvement where we have to use our, our general fund to be able to, to make this improvement. I'm gonna put this back on our staff's plate a little bit because there's, there's a lot of the issues that we're kind of leaving dangling right now. And I know what you really would love to hear is a green light. And I don't know, I mean, we're not planning to do that kind of thing. That's a whole public process that we have to, to think about. I don't know that what I don't know the answer to the financing. I would be, I would be surprised that a golf course, even as an enterprise, could do what it is that we're talking about. But I'm not a lawyer who does that. I am a lawyer, but I don't play that. So I think there's maybe more to talk about. But I think, hopefully, we've given you some things to think about. I think the conversation needs to continue. I think the conversation needs to continue. And I think you've gotten some good, hopefully you've gotten some good feedback from us. We've really gotten some good feedback from you on communications on the kind, I mean, you've really shared a lot of things with us that have been very useful. And hopefully we've put some things on your plate for this year that will be helpful to help us through our work plan.
Thank you.
One last ask?
Sure.
Okay.
It's it.
So this is a long.
Actually, you know what? I'm I'm not going to because we're ten minutes over and we really have told.
All right. Thank you.
What I can tell you is if you'd like, send us an email. Um, we'll talk to the staff liaison and get the stuff teed up for us. All right. Promise we'll read it and carry on the discussion.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Open Space, uh, for your patience. Um, and we're looking forward to getting going before we get our slides up here. You're with me for just a second. All right, I think we did give some overriding or overarching slides before first. Yeah. I am not seeing it here. Oh, here we are. Um, first things first. If you would go, we're gonna go around the room and just reintroduce uh, yourselves to us and we to you. Tell us name uh, pronouns that you use, what your role has been on the um, on OSAB and how long you've um, been involved with that or other things around the city. And we can start. Shall we start over here? You you were you were talking.
Okay, well, my name is Machiko. I've been on the Open Space Advisory Board uh, forever, I think now. Um, I can't even keep track of the years, but I'm happy to meet you all. So that's me.
Hey, everyone. My name's Ben Mao. Um, I'm new to the OSAB board, started just this January. Yeah, excited to be here.
Hi, my name's Graham Patterson. I was a January uh, first member of the OSAB, but I was two years a member in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Uh, my pronouns are he, him, his.
Hi, I'm Brad Pugh, and this is my second year on the board. Uh, I've been a Louisville resident for about eleven years now.
Hi, I'm Daniel Rapp. I'm also new on the board. Uh, first time on a uh, board overall here in the city. Um, and I've been a resident for also more than twelve years. And for consistency, also pronounce he, his.
Hi, I'm Andy Dorsey. Uh, this is my second year on the board. I've been a resident in Louisville for, I think, almost thirty-two years now. There's no truth to the rumor that we were gonna propose turning the golf course into open space, but I heard that that um, and I'm a he, him too.
Hello. I'm Susan McKeckern. I'm um, in my fourth year on the board and I've been chair. This is my second year as chair. I've been a Louisville resident for thirty-five years and very active as a weeder for many years. And when I retired, I wanted to become more actively involved.
I'm Barbara Bregnel, Open Space Superintendent and Staff Liaison to OSAB, she/her. Good to see you all tonight.
Adam Blackmore, Director, Parks, Rec, Open Space and Golf. I appreciate the new appointees and their accents. If we could get more accents on our appointees, that'd be great. Welcome.
Diana Langley, City Manager for Louisville.
Deb Fahy, Ward Two, City Council Person, and I can beat all of you. I've been here for forty-five years.
Chris Laymere, um, I've been here in thirty-one years.
Barbara Hamilton, Ward Three.
I'm Josh Cooperman, uh, Ward One. This is my first year on council. And for four years before that, I was on the Sustainability Advisory Board.
Caleb Dickinson, he, him, um, City Council Ward One. Uh, I was born here, so I have forty-six years.
In Louisville, though?
Boulder County, Boulder County. Louisville, Lafayette, Boulder. I've been all around. Don't worry about it. Um, uh, yeah, really, uh, you know, I I will say as someone who was born in in Boulder, you know, open space is something that just is, you just understand that's part of life and that's not normal around the world. And Louisville's fantastic for that. So thank you for all your work.
I'm Judy Kern, uh, City Council for Louisville and stuck right in the middle with all you thirty-ish years in uh, in our lovely community.
First of all, um, welcome. Um, and thank you for all that you all have have done. I I saw the figure, what was it, four hundred twenty-seven volunteer hours or some such? I mean, that's incredible. Thank you. Thank you for keeping that metric. I I I don't know how hard you have to squeeze people to to get that data, but I, it really does put a uh, a sobering reminder of just how much time this takes and how serious this uh, committee or this board is in doing the good work that we need you to do and that the charter talks about and that um, we rely upon. This is our annual joint meeting. We had our first, I think, last year. Um, we may be mixing it up a little bit. We may both invite, well, uh, invite a a member of your board to come fairly regularly to council meetings. I think that would be great to understand a little more about what we're doing. Uh, I think we are uh, probably gonna meet again uh, this year at some point to talk a little bit through kind of how things are going and talk to you about how things are going for us. So um, anyway, um, we can talk just a little bit tonight about uh, open space advisory role as well as the two thousand twenty-five council priorities and the um, OSAB priorities, which I know you've thought about and provided some slides. And then we can talk amongst ourselves, a little conversation about just, you know, sort of direction. And uh, a conversation that we can have after we've talked about all that. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you. Jenny, next slide, please. All right. So again, welcome and thank you for coming tonight and thank you for serving on this important board. This board is one of the few boards required by the charter. So next slide, uh, thank you, Jenny. And so um, since there's some newer members on the board, I'm gonna spend a little bit more time related to per the municipal code, the ongoing duties. And so you can see there's another slide, so it's not just A through D, although it goes all the way through M in terms of the ongoing duties for this uh, board. And um, you know, some key things are review the classification system for open space and recommend any changes to the classification system. Uh, review the open space master plan and make recommendations for changes to such plan based on new information and or circumstances affecting open space land. Inventory and provide recommendations to council for the classification of any open space acquired by the city after the enactment of this charter. Provide recommendations to the council and or planning commission on development applications. Uh, next slide, please. There you go. Provide input on the location of trails and paths on open space lands. Input to the planning commission and council on revisions of the plan. Uh, make recommendations to council on uh, management policies and procedures of open space land. Recommendations as to how open space within the city's boundaries immediately adjacent there too can best coexist with surrounding private land. Um, recommendations as to how the city can manage park and other land adjacent to open space lands in a manner that best promotes the continued integrity of open space. Recommendations for weed management, uh, environmental education that address management issues, including ways to minimize impacts on to native flora and fauna. A forum for citizen comment on open space and trails issues and recommendations on open space issues the board finds appropriate. So this board, you have a lot of responsibilities. Um, and Louisville has a lot of open space. As being a resident of Louisville for seven days now, um, I'm very impressed with the open space uh, within this community and you have such a responsibility. Um, and there's a lot of competing um, interests for open space. So next slide, please. Um, so this is just, you know, particularly for those members that are newer to the board. All city boards are subject to the Colorado Open Records Act and Open Meetings Rule. And i- is anybody not aware of what that is? Okay, if you need more information, we're happy to provide it to you. And then there's rules of procedures that are in place for all boards that covers meeting civility, general rules, meeting requirements. And then again, um, similar to what we discussed at the last meeting, one of the projects for staff this year is to update the bylaws for all of the boards to make them consistent. And then also new is the quasi judicial role associated with this board. So next slide, please. Next slide, please. So the council's twenty twenty-five work plan focuses on four priorities. Economic vitality, core services, safety and affordable housing, all viewed through two lenses. Equity, diversity, inclusion and sustainability. So at this point, I would like to uh, hand the presentation over to Susan so you can take over uh, the slides related to the uh, board's work plan.
Thank you very much, Diana. Um, I'd like to begin by just providing a brief statement about how passionate I am about open space and open space advisory board and how much I appreciate all the board's efforts. I really think that we're a remarkable board. And I'm not just saying that because I happen to be on the board. I think that this is a group of people who care very deeply about the city of Louisville and about how our open spaces are restored and managed and how we can expand those because it's a very scarce resource in our world. Um, OSAB is integral to the council's twenty twenty-five work plan under the priority of economic vitality and through the lens of environmental sustainability. Louisville is an attractive and liv- livable city in large part because of its beautiful outdoor spaces, which provide both physical and mental well-being and a refuge for native flora and fauna. Our overarching goal for the present and future is to protect, restore and add to our open space properties. With the number of long-range plans in process over the coming months, we expect much of our attention in the near term will be devoted to reviewing consultant recommendations regarding open space management, trails and long-range planning. We will also prioritize developing working relationships with other Louisville advisory boards and with neighboring communities to implement shared conservation goals since native habitats and trails don't stop at city boundaries. Our twenty twenty-five goals are listed in the PowerPoint, but in future years, we hope to advocate for a vote in the twenty twenty-eight election year to make the open space sales tax permanent, which would provide for more stable open space funding and increase opportunities for acquiring new properties through bond issues. Other long-term priorities are implementing a mobile in in education trailer, revisiting dark sky, designation for areas near open spaces, obtaining water rights to enhance the environmental health of Coal Creek and Heckla Lake, restoring and protecting the Coal Creek Preparian Zone and helping to establish an enforceable social trails policy to allow for better management and restoration of social trails throughout our open space properties. Okay, so I'll go our twenty twenty-four highlights. Um, I feel like we accomplished a lot last year. We provided recommendations to the city's internal open space land acquisition process and that's an ongoing priority for our our group. Um, that's still very much in a state of flux and we feel very strongly that it needs to be really systematized and that we really want to work with city council to come up with a system that works for both of us. We were very proud of our work. I know that it was hard to implement all the requirements of two C and we were actively involved in how the budget could be envisioned for that. For many years, we've been very actively involved in Red Tail Ridge and the trail plan is an ongoing issue that we're very concerned about. Um, we also last year advocated for an ordinance that would ban rodenticides within city limits. And that's something I would really like to hear city councils update on where that stands at present. My own particular little piece of OSAB is the Weed Whacker Group. And I was very proud that we were able to increase the number of volunteers that participated in that and the number of hours we put in dealing with weeds in a way that meant we didn't have to use as many pesticides on open space groups. Um, we're very excited that wayfinding is supposed to be completed this year and that's something, again, that has been a many years process for OSAB. I was very proud of our group that our Tiger team that researched grant opportunities for open space capital projects. Uh, we provided feedback on e-bike usage and we provided recommendations on the open space education and outreach programs, which we feel is a very important part of our mission and open spaces mission because if our citizens don't feel a real connection and the responsibility to our open spaces, we will have failed. You know, we, they need to feel as passionate about open spaces we do. And then we were also involved in reviewing the quasi judicial process for advisory boards and that's something that we take very seriously and recognize will be an ongoing part of our mission going forward. Next slide. Um, go back one. So our priorities this year that relate to the council work plan is we will continue to provide feedback on the comprehensive plan. We've sent a memo to city council about our our comp plan priorities. Um, the pros and the trails plans as well, which are upcoming. And again, as I said before, we feel it's really important to refine the city's internal property acquisition process. You know, that's something that's in a a state of ambiguity right now. And especially given how few opportunities there will be to increase the amount of open space that we have and how how very limited those open space opportunities are. We think that's a a really high priority for both council and for OSAB. We strongly support restoration of native ecosystems and grasslands. We appreciate that the open spaces are a really important recreation opportunity for our citizens, but we don't want to forget the flora and fauna that live on those spaces as well. Um, we talked a little bit about wayfinding and we will continue to support that. And we will continue to advise on Red Tail Ridge, the final trail plan. And if there are any issues regarding protecting the open space that has been designated for that property, we are very open to doing that. And we've been told that quasi judicial review may come up from time to time. It's an ongoing. We've just put it on our agenda for every month that we meet in case there's something that comes up. And we have a few additional priorities. We are pushing to for Louisville to become a bird city. We're already a bee city and a tree city and we think being a bird city will kind of complete the trifecta. So um, that's really something that now is in council's hand. So um, that's really something that now is in council's hand, hands. Staff has um prepared the initial information, so I'll look forward to hearing from council about how you feel about that. Um, something that I feel very strongly about as chair of OSAB is that we need to really expand our collaboration, not only with Lewis, other Louisville advisory boards, but with neighboring communities advisory boards. You know, as I said before, habitat doesn't end at city borders and I feel that a lot of, lot of local groups, you know, Louisville, Broomfield, Superior. We all care about a lot of the same things. Coal Creek runs through all of our communities. So um, that's something that I personally hope to really expand on in the coming years as chair of OSAB. And again, we hope that the rodenticide ordinance will, will make it through city council and we're anxious to hear the status of that right now. Okay. And then um, we are trying to align not only the city council, but with the department's work plans as well. So um, we are on, on task to review interpretive education panels, some of which have already been completed and others which are in the works. And we just think that the staff is doing a wonderful job with those and that really fits into the whole education mandate that we have and making sure that our citizens understand what makes a particular open space special. Wildfire mitigation is an ongoing issue, a very important thing to our whole community and making sure that our citizens understand what our wildlife mitigation efforts are and why they're important. Things like the goat grazing, the cow grazing on open space, um, how those mitigation efforts fit in with how that environment is being cared for. Um, so that's a very important issue. The Short Street Highway 42 Urban Renewal Plan is a, is not really central to OSAB, but it does, will connect different open spaces. That'll be something that comes up. Um, obviously we review budgets. It's also exciting that we're going to be able to participate in the upcoming BioBlitz, which will be held by, it's not just a citizen BioBlitz, but it will involve um experts and scientists who are really going to give us a a lot of information about what our open space biota contain. And I'll let Amber talk a little bit about what's happening with um these items that aren't on the work plan.
So we've listed some of the items that OSAB has already shared today in green. You can see staff comments. Um, so again, these are items that aren't currently on the department work plan, so we're looking for council feedback tonight if there's support to work these into this year's work plan. Um, as Susan mentioned, we have the Bird City designation. Um, it is a relatively small lift for Louisville Open Space. We've really already achieved all of the measures that are required just in our day-to-day work. Um, so it really requires a $200 fee for us to gain that compliance and a resolution from council due either July 1st or November 1st. So we're seeking um feedback from council if you want us to pursue that. Uh, we do feel like we're able to fit it into our work plan and accomplish it. Um, and meet Susan's trifecta goal here. Um, second bullet, we have collaborating with our neighbors. Of course, staff supports that on all levels. Um, just with the caveat that we really want to understand the project's scope. This is uh in reference to a citizen group. Um, so just understands, understanding the scope of the project before we jump into any activities. And so we can come back at some point to council. Um, and if there is a collaborator along Coal Creek, we can inform you of what those projects look like and what the fiscal responsibility would be related to that. Um, so again, staff is happy to participate in those conversations, but not yet ready to commit to anything without knowing what we're jumping into. Um, collaborating with other advisory boards, as Susan already mentioned. Um, happy to support that effort with director approval, just making sure it's a topic approved by council and we know which board or staff is leading the topics. Um, and the passage of rodenticides, uh again, as Susan mentioned, OSAB submitted a letter of recommendation to city council to support that effort. But the board also recognizes that is a citywide effort on private lands and not on public land, so it's a little outside of um, OSAB's purview, but OSAB's happy to support that and however council would like to see those efforts.
Thank you, Amber.
Alright, thanks. Um, that's a lot. Wow.
That's the short. We had to pare that way down, Chris.
Yeah. Um, what's the BioBlitz? Can you describe that a little more?
I'll let Amber describe that.
We're coming up with our clever marketing with our communication teams, but BioBlitz is something that you might hear of commonly done with the iNaturalist app, which records species. But I like to say, oh, marketing's not going to be happy with me, but this is like the supreme BioBlitz. We have experts coming in from the Colorado Heritage National Program. We have researchers, we have an indigenous consultant coming in. Um, so the hope is we'll have all of these leading scientists and be able to host volunteer groups so that citizens can do real citizen science in Louisville instead of just take the picture of the species and have it cataloged. And this data um is largely when we hire consultants to work with us. This is the database they use to give us information and Louisville is somewhat missing in this. So what's really exciting about this BioBlitz is we're contributing to statewide data collection and nationwide data collection for um habitat in Colorado. So it's really part of a bigger picture.
That's amazing. Others questions? Yes.
Actually, um, this is the first I heard about the Bee City Initiative. Bird City, sorry, Bee City. Thank you. Yeah. Uh, Bird City Initiative. We will, or just another intersection. Well, do you want to find in Maine? If, it would be great, and maybe this is the question is, can you get us more information? I mean, the $200 is probably an easy yes and proclamation, but it's more about, are you able to provide us? You said you already do all the things. It would be great to know what those things are that ma- would make us qualify to be the bird city.
You want me to talk about that? Or do you want to talk about it? Okay.
So um, that information will all be included when we come forward with the resolution. So you'll get to see it in advance and it'd be part of the packet. If not prior to that, it's not like there's some big secret. We can Google it. Um, but yeah, you'll, you'll get that information as well.
I can just quick, quickly tell you a little bit about it. Um, you need to hold one educational event a year. You need to celebrate migratory bird day. Um, you need to have, it's a, a series of points that you have to accumulate in different areas. Um, you have to show that you're restoring or maintaining good bird habitat. And um, you need to reduce plastics. So it's really sort of a broader effort to make Louisville a, you know, a healthier community, not only for birds, but also for people.
I'll just add one thing that um, the staff already this year undertook a project to fence off part of Heckla Lake, which is really amazing bird habitat, to create a better environment for shorebirds. So the things that Amber and her team are doing regularly are really enhancing the ability of the city to be a, a spot for people to observe bird life and to protect bird life. So I think even without the requirements, we're doing the gist of that program.
Other questions? Yes, Amber Tim.
Um, I think three. What, uh, first, uh, as it pertains to red tail, curious how much work you guys are putting into like the future of that, of that space. Talk about the trails and things like that. Um, but, but also, you know, so a lot of things that we saw from council's perspective were, you know, provided from my perspective, that they were provided by the developer, right? And oh, this is what you can do, what you should do. And you know, what percentage of it is a park? What percentage of it is open space? How that open space is accessed or not, you know, the paths that go through it, all those things. I'm sure you're putting a lot of, a, a lot of mental work into that, but curious like formally what, what we can expect as council as far as your work on that part of our community and suggestions you'll be bringing back to, to us for, you know, how to best utilize that space for all the things we've, we've been talking about, not, and not anything in particular. Um, and curious, you know, when, when it comes to collaboration, if there's, you know, joint work with uh, the Rec Advisory Board, which you just met with, and P-Plab, which we'll meet with afterward. And you guys have, you know, that, that push and pull of, of how to use the spaces and how to make it one nice cohesive thing. So of course you have different staff liaisons. We have Adam here who's, you know, kind of, he has his fingers in all of those uh, pies, if you will, but like, is that, listen, anyway, um. I don't know how to eat pie. I'm not a pie person. Uh, so anyway, um, you know, just think, think about that space and I'm just curious, we can, you can answer that right now and I have a couple of other questions, but just curious where you guys are in that and if you feel like you have direction from council to be working on, you know, red tail specific, I mean, it's a, an enormous, I mean, talk about acquisition, an enormous piece of land that we're about to get our hands on and just, so if you can give me some idea of what you have done or what you're hoping to do there.
Well, we aren't doing anything actively right now. The last um active role that we had was when we had a presentation from the developers and they showed us what their trail plan options were. And we provided um a letter of recommendation about that, but we haven't had any response to that yet. So that's sort of where we are, we're in a, a little bit of a holding pattern. But I really like your idea of working with REC and P-Plab to have a, a more cohesive vision of what makes sense for the city in that space in terms of parks and recreation as well as open space and open space that is for passive recreation and open space that is for habitat preservation. So I think that's really where there's a little ambiguity right now especially is is the, is the pond going to be preserved or is it going to have trails around it? Um, that's really one of the areas that I feel we still need some resolution on.
Um, and then, you know, you kind of brought it up, but, but the push from OSAB to ban rodenticides on private property does feel like it's just kind of like, we just care about this stuff. And I mean, it's not, it's not open space, right? It's private land. And so you guys are pushing for that. Can you help me connect the dots other than what I'm assuming, but connect the dots of, of, of why OSAB is pushing a private land ordinance?
Um, it was sort of uh, came to be because of red tail development. Um, because the developers were not committing to not using rodenticide to uh, manage the prairie dog population. So it would have, obviously applies to all private land and then, and public land, rodenticides are already banned. So but you have to think about the implications go beyond a private property boundary. If rodenticides are used, um, if raptors then eat those rodents that were killed by rodenticides, they can ha- they can be killed as well because of that. And those are raptors that use public lands as well as private lands. So you can't say that there's any clear demarcation between what happens on private land and what happens on public land. So it's true that OSAB doesn't have the ability to recommend what happens on private ran- land, but it affects what happens on open space land.
No, I appreciate that. I think that, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, in the, in the red tail context, right, it's like oh, they're like the same. It's like this private land and public land are right next to each other. It's all continuous and we want the same thing to happen on both. And gosh, we don't have control over that side of the fence, if you will. I get, I, and well, I don't think we're getting into deep, uh, deep conversation. Another thing, this thing, you know, I, I definitely am concerned about the, the idea of enforcing a citywide, like what you can do on private land. So I'd be more interested if there's a way to somehow, I mean, like adjacent to open space or large pieces, you know, it's like, there's something about like not, not Jeff's backyard. Right? Like, that's just hard to enforce, right? So we make rules that we can't enforce is, is tough, but it seems more enforceable on large, you know, so that's something, again, I don't think we have the time tonight getting deep dives on like how to go forward, but I think that's an interesting piece of, of like, how does it really, you know, relate to open space? I think you
Yeah.
pointed out. And then my last
I would just say that there are a lot of neighboring communities that do have these bans and they have managed to deal with the public-private issue. So
Yeah.
it would be good to, to look at what other communities have been able to successfully implement.
Yeah. And then my last just feedback on the two C, you know, permanence is, you know, I, I'm curious if you guys have a goal for acreage or percentage or something of acquisition? Because my only concern about like a permanent tax that currently spells out like acquisition versus maintenance, you know, I think of 2065, are we, are we, it's permanent, right? So are we still trying to acquire open space in 2065? Like, oh yeah, always and forever. Or is there a goal from open space? Can you advise us on, you know, a, a a, a larger, you know, I think growing up in Boulder, I alluded as like, we want a ring around Boulder that can never be developed. It's like, so is that, is that the goal or is it a percentage or is it an acreage or what's, what, what is our goal? Not just to have money to acquire, but what is it we want to acquire? How much we want to acquire? When do we want to acquire it? Cause I would be uncomfortable with a permanent tax that, that has acquisition in it. And so I'd like, oh, every 10 years we can have that conversation. Do we still need acquisition funds or not? So that would be, I'd be thinking about like, you know, over time, what does that look like and, and how flexible is it over time? So a permanent tax for me is like, I've got to understand what, what that would be used for in 2065. Or like, well, it's permanent-ish and then we can end it whenever we want, but we don't have to go back to the voters over and over to keep asking for it. You know, so just curious to learn more about that, not to, not necessarily tonight, but over, over time, that would be something I'd be really curious about.
I will just quickly say to that, that, you know, Lafayette has a permanent open space tax now and it's a combination of acquiring and restoring and maintaining existing open space. And that's really where the bulk of open space funding comes from, whether acquisitions is included or not. So that's just a, a brief statement about that. And I would just add too, that I think that plays into our highest priority of making the internal acquisitions process more well-defined. And I think that will answer some of your questions. Angie.
There we go. Thank you. Sorry about that. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that have come to my mind as I've walked around. The, there've been trail gates that have been installed on the trails, but they seem to be placed in very strange places for very strange reasons. And I don't understand this. And one of these trail gates, which clearly we've spent a bunch of money on is in the middle of an open space where all you have to do is just walk two feet to the side and you walk right around it. It has a little note that says, oh, this is if we're going to prevent you from walking down this trail. Sometimes, you know, please make sure that what you're doing makes a lot of sense because that gate is not going to do anything to prevent people from walking on that trail. And most of those other gates that have been installed along the Coal Creek Trail that are over along Dillon Road are really pointless. And anyway, um, the other thing is that there is a bike trail. It's that power line trail that goes along power line and then it dead ends at Dillon Road and then it starts on the other side of the street. But it is impossible to get across that street with a bicycle. And so if you could just figure out how to connect that, it would take about half a mile off of trying to go up the street and back around. So that would be a really great way of connecting trails. It's connecting trails. If you only have to go through dirt or concrete, it's fine, but when you have to go through the curb, the street, the middle of the curb, the other part of the insert, the other part of the curb, it's very problematic for people who are trying to commute on bicycles. And my husband has commuted on bicycle ever since we lived here in 2001. He's been biking to End Car up the hill every single day. And he has whined to me about this trail every single day. And when I realized I was going to be here, I said, I promised um, I was going to try and take care of this. Uh, the other thing which I really like about the OSAB plan is thinking about landscaping, because I know in the back, in the past, when there was a tree board, they purposely planted trees that didn't have fruit on them. I think that re-aligning your ideas with planting trees that actually could produce fruit and also blossom, which would then also support bees, might be a good idea when you're removing trees like the elms or other kinds of problems or ashes that are being removed. If you could think about plant a cherry tree, plant an apricot tree. My apricot tree blooms every single year absolutely beautifully and then two And then two days later, it's a heavy frost. So it's a perfect harbinger of winter coming, or at least a killing frost. But for at least three or four days, it is massively filled with, with bees trying to get their pollen. And finally, um, just evaluating where you're watering and how you're watering, any spaces where you have open space. Because, um, I think that we all realize, and I'm sure open space is probably aware of this, that we had the largest die-off of bee colonies in the history of whatever. And so as a community, we should probably be very attentive to trying to make sure that our community is as friendly to pollinators as possible. And I appreciate the OSAPs, um, mentioning that because I think it's really important.
You might want to join our Bee City community.
Well, our Rotary Club just gave a, um, a big grant to the Beekeepers Association to help people do that. So hopefully, um, they're going to get that started quickly.
All right. Any other, okay. I, I had a couple, one, one of the points that I wanted to make about the, uh, working with other communities. We actually have on our council, um, designated a couple of different, designated one member of our council to talk to, the folks from Lafayette, one from, superior to Superior, one to Brumfield. And I think I would want that, any of that to at least coordinate with that person. We can talk about that, uh, later. But I mean, I think it's, it makes a lot of sense that, you know, open spaces are connected and the issues make, you know, make for good conversations between communities. It's just we, it would be good for, for us to be involved in, in that little piece.
Absolutely.
To help. It's a great, it's a great example of kind of inner community cooperation, I think. I love the idea.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that city council is ahead of us on this.
Other thoughts? Yeah. Go ahead.
I'm going to ask a question that I also asked to the Recreation Advisory Board. I'm curious, you know, as a board, what you are hoping to get out of the PROS master plan?
You're speaking about the PROS plan, not the comp plan? Okay. Well, I think that what we really want to see with the PROS plan is that we protect, enhance and expand open spaces and trails. That we really pay attention to restoring native habitats. That it taught, it really deals a lot with native plants and animals and how we can enhance their wellbeing. How the PROS plan can address issues of resilience in the face of climate change. How we can manage our water supplies to make sure that our water resources are maintained. You know, the Coal Creek area, Heckla, Harper Lake and so on. Social trails is a really big concern for OSAB and how those are monitored and managed. You know, right now there's really not any enforceable policy about social trails. And especially with the way e-bikes are using social trails, the environmental damage is just greater than it ever has been. So social trails is a really important part of especially the trails plan, which is separate from the PROS plan. Does anybody else want to add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a few comments. First and foremost, I wanted to thank, um, the advisory board for all the work that they do. You know, when, when items cross my desk and I see that you've set eyes on it, I breathe a sigh of relief and I take your feedback very seriously in the decision-making process. So thank you for that. I also wanted to thank staff, and I know we have Ember and Director Blackmore here tonight, for everything that you do. I know you are very thoughtful and you plan what your team implements out literally in the field. And I know, um, there were questions about the gates earlier that you did consult with OSAB. You consulted with operations staff and emergency services as well. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that there was cross-communication and work and due diligence before those gates were installed. And I know any of us are happy to forward information that's publicly available on the website and that we received an email as well to answer any questions or concerns related to that. One of the items I neglected to bring up earlier with the Recreation Advisory Board, but I'll bring it up here, and it also applies to, uh, P Plab as well, is when we're thinking about Red Tail Ridge and how we can utilize that space as a community, you know, not only having cross-collaboration between those groups, but it is in close proximity to a school. So I would love to pull in maybe the Youth Advisory Board or BVSD or something to see how those users would like to envision that area. Um, because we do have an underpass that's supposed to go in there as well. So I can imagine that will be used quite regularly by the students and staff in that, at that facility. And finally, I'm really excited, uh, for the ongoing conversations regarding the acquisition fund. Um, not only as a council member, but as a member of finance committee, we constantly have our eyes on this fund. And I want to make sure that we can pivot really quickly when we see an opportunity in our area because the land is so scarce and time is of the essence. So I know we've chatted about a few strategies, but I'd love to really see this come to light in the near future so we can activate when an opportunity presents itself. So thank you all for your work. Much appreciated.
I'd just like to make one comment in response because I, um, council member, when, uh, you were talking, I started to think about the conversation earlier about communication that came up around, um, turning the skating rink into a pickleball and how do those decisions get communicated? And I think even with some of the things that we talk about, I've noticed as a citizen, how hard it is to get information. And, and I just wanted to say that I, I think there's a, there's a more system, systematic process that we need about communication. And now that I'm retired, I have more time to sort of dig in. When I was working full-time, I really was challenged to figure out what was happening in the city. And so things like the gates, in the grand scheme of things, that's not a really huge thing. But I know for people near them, that's maybe a little mysterious. And so that's not just an open space department issue. It's about how do we get the information out? And it took me a while to figure out how to get on the email lists. And then I get all kinds of random emails, but it's hard for me to even distill from them what's really the important information out there and how to get the information I need. And even, you know, you can't necessarily ask the open space staff to maintain the webpage in a way that might be helpful. So how do we do that as a city as a whole? It's a much broader issue than this. And, you know, I was aware of the issue with the pickleball courts, but I can imagine that 90% of the people really weren't because it's difficult to really follow all the different advisory boards. So I don't have a good answer for you. I wish I did. And raising problems without a solution is something I always yelled at people for when they came to me. But I, I just have to make that comment. So thank you.
Just on that point, I, I think you, you raise a really good point where we have struggled. I think most cities struggle with how to keep their citizens informed, how to make things transparent. Transparency is a huge community value here, um, to shrine in the, in the charter. And, um, we're always looking for ways of doing that. One of the things that was done last year, and I think it's bearing fruit now, is that we're, we've got a manager of communications and the manager of communications is working very hard with all, uh, points on the compass in the city to try to get, uh, information delivered in a systematic, more systematic way. Uh, you can't even know how many web pages. Yeah. Were up, how many websites were up, uh, that the city had some, um, uh, control over, but not really in some ways. And that's being kind of brought to, to heel and brought in a, in a good way. And so I think that's an ongoing process and we're, we're going to keep pushing. I think you've got a council that's very interested in this. We've even dealt with this in the last 24 hours, a couple of us, uh, back and forth. So, um, I, point well taken. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the, the other, what I'm really excited about, right? We're, we're talking about having, you know, more frequent meetings, at least with your chair, if not like a designated member. And, and for those meetings to be, you know, with other, uh, board chairs or other, other representatives of your boards, so we're all sitting in the same room at the same time. So like one example of that for me is like, I, I've had this concept and I can never remember where I get things from, but called the Lola Loop. And so Louisville to Lafayette Loop, um, where it connects our main street to their main street via like Wanaka Lake and Coal Creek Trail and all that stuff. And it is, you know, intergovernmental, obviously. It is through, you know, open space. It is recreation. It is economic vitality. It is so many, it's transportation, right? Trail connectivity, all these things we talked about, but who's going to do that project? And of course, no, but no one has direction to do that. So I'll push the brakes there. No one has direction to work on that. But it's not one person's job, right? And it's not even one city's job. And so it's like, things like that take collaboration. They take a lot of people sitting in the same room at the same time, think about how those things interconnect. And even like, and that, we'll, we'll need an underpass, right? It's like, oh geez, and all these things that go with that. So I'm just saying this as more like to, an example of why we, why I want to do a better job of connecting with you all. But I also want all of us to do a better job of connecting with each other and all those different boards. And just trying to figure out how to do that, where to do that, and how we can give, you know, better direction to you guys for, for what it is that we're hoping to get done. And I think having those regular meetings and having the comp plan and the PROS plan and, and more collaboration with us are all pushing in the right direction, I think, for better, better, you know, transparency and collaboration on all the work we're doing. So I'll echo what, you know, just so, so thankful. I think at this point, I've appointed, because of six years on council, I've appointed, been a part of appointing every single member of every single board at some point, right? And it's, so I've got to see all of your resumes, interview lots of you. You're all so remarkable and thank you to the new members for jumping in. I hope you do it for a long time, but it's just, it's remarkable, the, the talent and the effort we have on all of our boards, but, but you guys in particular. So thank, thank you for all your, all your time and commitment to our community.
I would just like to beat into that Louisville Lafayette link that one of the things you might not know about is the Lake to Lake Trail. And we're working with the city of Lafayette to, um, connect Wanaka to Heckla with a walking and biking route. So that's part of your, of your larger initiative there.
Yes.
I will build just a little bit on that and say that partnerships could also be done with, um, the surrounding communities and with the county on fire mitigation, particularly on the ditches and getting those things cleaned out. You've already done a lot with the goat grazing and the cattle and, but there's still more that needs to be done. And there are other groups that are working on that and would love to partner with you and get some more of that done. But I also like to add my thanks to all of you members. I've known a few of you. Thank you for serving as long as you have. And for those new ones that are coming on, it's going to be great. You're going to have a great time. And thank you also to staff. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Fahy, for being one of our liaisons in the past.
Thanks. Can I make one more comment to Councilmember Cooperman's question about the PROS plan? I, and, um, Susan alluded to the issue around trails and social trails. And I, I just want to put, get your guys' thinking caps on about that because I think that's going to be a complicated conversation. But if we're thinking about the goals that Su- Susan laid out originally, about how do we think about, um, managing open space, both for recreation and for habitat preservation, then we've got to figure out a way to deal with social trails. Because if you, you see, you know, I, I live near North Open Space and you watch more and more social trails proliferate right through Metallurg nesting habitat, for example. And that's just one example. And there's, obviously it happens to other open spaces as well. And, you know, we've been through the Gate Gate before. I, some of you weren't, I mean, I, I know the mayor was here for that. And, and it's, so it's a very complex issue when people have very strong feelings about it. And part of this comes back to a really thoughtful communication process about what is open space about? What does it stand for? Is it just for recreation? Um, or is it, is there a habitat preservation, a part of the mission as well? And I'm not sure that we've communicated that as effectively to citizens or had that conversation with citizens as well. Part of the signage and the, the permanent signage that the staff is working on, I think is a really good attempt to start that conversation about that open space is more than just the trails, but it's also the habitat and the flora and fauna add to the value of the city. But, um, we won't be able to do the trails discussion without a bigger discussion about what is the value of open space and how does open space serve multiple needs? And I, I actually think this is going to be a fairly complex conversation as we go through that part of the process. And that'll be another part of the whole PROS master plan, which is how do you balance the recreational and the preservation aspects of open space? And again, that's going to come back to another bigger discussion with the community about what does the community think about open space? And I already know from talking to my neighbors, boy, there is a lot of different points of view about it. But as I watched what happened after the goats grazed and everybody decided, oh, there's a new place to walk. There's a, there's a lot of, I think, ideas that maybe open spaces just to go wherever you want to go. So, um, I, I don't, you have plenty of things to think about and plenty of controversies to deal with. I don't want to presage another one. But I think those are the kind of issues that we're starting to think about grappling with in the trails plan.
I, I think getting the results of that, um, the consultant's report is going to be huge. And hopefully the Christopher Goodmilk, um, to other discussions. I'm going to give you the last word and we're going to have to break here.
The last word is thank you.
Thanks, um, and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you come back in seven minutes here, eight fifteen?
Welcome to the our annual get together. I'm gonna try to do some more of these in different ways, and we'll kind of get back with you about that. But appreciate your coming and starting just a little bit later than we had anticipated. I think, just going to pull up my slides here. What we're really kind of doing tonight, I think, is we're going to talk a little bit about People Labs' role, about council's priorities and the work plan, and what People Labs 2025 priorities are, and then get some discussion direction from council. But first, why don't we have you introduce yourselves again, or reintroduce yourself, and we will too. If you could say what your name is, what your role is on, and any little thing you want us to know.
My name is Sigourney Buck. This is my third year on the board. Pronouns such, I don't know, she, her? I don't do pronouns anyway. My role is to, you know, give my opinions on what we can do, what we can accomplish, and to work with Jody and the rest of the People Lab board. And I said three, this is my third year with People Lab.
My name is Jody Ash. I am the chair. I have been on People Lab. This is my second year. My first year for chair. So I'm learned of the ropes. And so don't have quite quite have it down yet. But and I've been in Louisville for 20 years.
Good evening. I'm Abby McNeil, I'm the park superintendent and the staff liaison to People Lab.
Good evening. Adam Blackmore, Director, Parks Rec Open Space, been with the city for nearly three years.
Good evening, and I'm Diana Langley, City Manager.
Debbie Fahy's Ward Two, City Council.
Chris Layman here.
Barbara Hamlington, Ward Three.
It'll take a while.
I'm Josh Cooperman. I'm one of the council members in Ward One. This is my first year on council. And before that, I was on the Sustainability Advisory Board for about four years. I'm also on the B-City Committee, still.
Caleb Dickinson, I'm enjoying my dinner. City Council, Ward One, I was elected back in 2019 and reelected in 2023, I guess. So very, very excited to hear more from you guys and appreciate all the work you do.
I'm Judy Kern, and I'm in Board Two, Councilmember. Thanks for being here.
Right. All right. Thank you. Jenny, can you please go to the next slide? Next one? Next slide, please. Oh, okay. All right. So again, welcome and thank you. So the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board role or board was originally formed in 1980 as the tree board, and then turned into the Horticulture and Forestry Advisory Board. And now it's the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board. So per municipal code, the board, we have the general related to this board, and then the appeals process. So any decision of the city forester concerning licensing or removal of trees may be appealed to and heard by the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board. Next slide, please. And then per resolution, this board is to assist council and staff in determining the community's needs and desires for parks, programs, and facilities in relationship to parks-related issues in the Parks Recreation, Open Space, and Trails Master Plan. Advise on park and public landscape maintenance, development, and redevelopment, review referrals for proposed landscape plans for public areas, advise on the capital and operating budget as relates to parks and public landscape maintenance, on best practices related to parks and landscaping, promote healthy horticultural and forestry practices in public and private landscapes, educate the public regarding horticultural and forestry practices appropriate to Louisville's climate and soils, review and give comments on city landscape master plans, landscape ordinances, and other appropriate landscape documents, maintain a list of small, medium, and large trees, bushes, and shrubs to be planted as street trees or park trees, and advise the city on the adoption of regulations for the care and planting of trees. Next slide, please. And then again, all city boards are subject to the Colorado Open Rules, Records Act, and Open Meeting Rules. And then rules of procedure are in place for all boards. One of the goals of council this year is to update the bylaws to be consistent across all the boards, and then the new quasi judicial goal. And next slide, please, for the council work plan. So again, the council work plan includes four priorities: economic vitality, core services, safety, and affordable housing, all viewed through two lenses of equity, diversity, and inclusion, and environmental sustainability. So at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Jody to talk about People Labs' work. Thank you.
So highlights of 2024. We submitted a memo and a direction to the Louisville entry signage, and basically identified a few different places that that could be a good place to support that. We supported pros, design review for projects, including playgrounds of Joe Carnpool Meadows, Andre, and Sunflower. The outdoor recommendations roadmap and build out at the operation model.
I'm so sorry. Thank you. And supported Rab and People Lab Subcommittee with priorities and initial projects, building out the cost estimates and providing feedback to staff. And we also continue to support B-City. For 2025, what I've what we've done here is tried to connect city councils, your priorities alongside of what we are looking at. So with budgetary support, that would be under core services and safety. We're going to support the parks operational budget needs for the current two-year budget cycle. I believe that is at our next meeting. Keep communications open regarding the underfunding of the parks operation, which is anticipated in 2027. Pollinator habitat resilience, fire resistant, low water, sustainable landscape opportunities. We are constantly looking for for those opportunities. And that falls under core services, safety, economic vitality, and sustainability. Sustainability is, I think, a real big focus for People Lab, and we are all in agreement with with that. So sustainable landscape opportunities that are resilient in collaboration with OSAB for pocket plantings, transitional planting areas from parks to open space, and enhancing cornerstones, raised landscape bed, and continuing work at the arboretum. Education, core services, sustainability, and EDI. We are always looking for educational opportunities, as in our mission, to support the public's knowledge and understanding of the parks program. Topics are including fire hardening, sustainable landscaping, Japanese beetle mitigation, mental health benefits of park spaces, and continuation of the B-City USA designation. They do a lot of public outreach, which is really awesome. This year, we are going to take a look at the IPM, which is under core services, safety, sustainability, and EDI. We will continue to support the reduction of pesticide use in parks and city maintained properties, encourage community members to reduce pesticide use, and enhance community education, increase transparency on pesticide use on city properties, and review the current IPM. For the pros projects, we have Memory Square, median renovations, and 2025 CIP projects and development reviews, which is under core services, sustainability, and EDI. The design process for Memory Square is going to be coming up, I understand, as well as the median renovations continuing and developments as requested. We would also like to collaborate with other advisory boards and commissions, which we believe falls under core services, sustainability, and EDI. These are not included on the council's adopted plan, which is the outdoor recreation amenities roadmap and build up, build out, sorry, of operation, operational model for multi-use fields, which is under core services, economic vitality, and EDI. Rab and People Lab Subcommittee will continue planning identification of priorities and project recommendations, potential tennis programming expansion, feasibility study on multi-use fields, and redesign of the current athletic field space at Cleo Mud Rock. These are in alignment with Parks Department. Pollinator landscape plannings, we are looking at the arboretum, and the transformational challenge, which is a grant for sustainability and Resource Central. Educational opportunities with pros, park operations seasonally, Japanese beetle, Emerald Ash Borer, and water conservation. Were you supposed to do this part?
You're doing a great job.
But please feel free to interject. I'll just finish it.
As Jody mentioned, our staff is really dedicated and committed to enhancing on all of our landscape plantings as we upgrade. And we're always having a pollinator focus. We did, we were awarded the Landscape Transformation Challenge Grant in collaboration with sustainability. We'll be doing, removing some irrigated turf grass and planting sustainable plants with Resource Central. So that's upcoming in May. We're always looking for educational opportunities. So some of the items that are forthcoming from People Lab memo was received today. So it has to pass through me, is one on helping educate the community on how they can best manage Japanese beetle. So there's a memo coming asking for for that educational piece. But our staff is always working with our marketing team, as well as communicating with People Lab on collaborative efforts associated with our MO Ash Borer Program, what we're doing as far as our irrigated spaces and how we're striving to conserve water, and then just general operations. And then lastly, we are continuing to collaborate with Play Boulder and the Boulder County Youth Forestry Corps. Last year was a trial year, and they're continuing that service. And last year, we got 16 trees planted, as well as education throughout the summer. This year, we're going for 25 trees, matching our partners at Lafayette. We're very excited to get that going. We have three locations that will be planting the 25 trees to try to diversify the areas throughout the community. So those are just some things that are coming up that do do a lot of cross alignment with the People Labs work plan.
Council questions? Yes, Councilmember Kirk.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. Appreciate the fact that you guys did come and want to talk to us, and they'd be grilled. Thanks for all this work. This is awesome. And I appreciate that the some of the areas that were burned in the Marshall Fire, and now there, some of the building, a lot of the building has been completed, will be able to refocus. We'll be able to refocus on those public pieces of land that are near the entrances to communities or like at the corner section around communities. I was thinking like along McAslin and Via Appia, those kind of areas that kind of got burned down and are icky. It's nice that we're having that conversation now. I was curious to know, where are the three locations for the trees?
For the youth corps, South Boulder Road, just west of the intersection at Via Appia, Washington Avenue, and the detention areas to the west side of Cleo Mud Rock Park, going towards Hoover.
Okay. And when are you guys continuing your conversation on the the medians and those changes that we've been seeing over the last couple of years?
So that will be an upcoming council item. It's on the advanced agenda. The intention right now, we have designs. We're waiting on pricing for our consultants, but it would be coming up within the next six to eight weeks.
Do those include like adding, have you guys talked about like, since it used to be the tree ward, putting trees back along like McAslin, for example, where they've all burned down?
There will be, so we have added quite a few new trees along McAslin. There will be some trees coming out of McAslin because there's a lot of Emerald Ash Borer issues still there. We removed most of them at Via Appia and McAslin within the last year. But any of the medians that have the ash trees or ineffective or dying trees will be replaced at least one for one, if not more so, with new plantings on the medians.
Okay. It just, I wasn't sure if you guys were looking at areas of high congestion, high traffic being pollution areas in McAslin and South Boulder are probably two of the biggest ones to add, like additional tree planting, so that as people try and use those sidewalks or bike along there, it's maybe a little less.
Yeah, I would, I would note that in the out years as well, we still have funding currently approved and allocated for the next phases. And so the intention would be making the way all the way north on McAslin probably next, and then starting to tackle South Boulder. It'll be a multi-phase, multi-year approach just because of funding availability, but certainly agree.
Okay.
And if I, if I can add one comment on one of the locations we chose for the youth corps collaboration, it's, there are aged trees along the section that we we chose, and this is more of like an understory tree planting. So we're really hoping that we can get the, I believe it's eight trees that are going on that section, might only be six, that we get them planted now so that by the time we might lose some of the older aged trees on that south side, that these would be more mature to help take over.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember.
Yes, I'm, I'm curious about the reconstruction of Sunflower and Enclave Park because of the fire. Are you putting in more trees than we had before? And will there be any pollinator gardens in the parks?
In Sunflower, there will be pollinator parks. There's pocket, there's two pocket areas of landscape that have that theme to them. Specific at Sunflower along Washington Street, there will be sunflowers planted there. And then there's two more native landscaping plants along the walking trail that was reestablished, kind of in the middle of the park where the concrete was replaced. There's also some play area with some, some landscaping. There's also trees being replanted throughout. Don't know the quantity off the top of my head, but it's a more than a, it's almost like a two-for-one. It's Sunflower specifically. Enclave is enhanced as well with the number of trees that are going back in that area up and around on the more northern side, surrounding the play structure. And then we'll kind of like on the northeast corner of it. And then there are pockets of landscape plants that are all pollinator associated.
But the, the trees on the north side aren't going to have huge root systems that will affect the drainage? Is that right?
The, the drainage at Enclave specifically, or?
Yes.
The trees are, that are chosen in those areas are specific to be able to manage that as a detention pond. But so we're keeping them up on the higher side of of that area.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes.
I think it would be valuable to get, and, and three years, two years, I realize that some of this predates you. But what, one thing that predates my tenure on council was sort of the approval and direction for this huge, multi-year park improvement thing planned that we did. And, and the result is phenomenal, right? We have so many parks across our city that have gotten upgraded. And of course, there are some that have not yet, some that are, you know, were on the list and then lost in the fire and back on the list now for different reasons. But kind of a progress report of sorts, but also just a celebration of all of that work. Because again, most of the people on council weren't really a part of that. It's something we benefited from, you know, prior, but it, but it continues to happen and it continues to go. And, you know, as my kids get older, I'm not at the parks as much anymore. And so just kind of getting that storytelling of, of the phenomenal playgrounds and parks that we, that we do have. I'm really excited that you guys are collaborating with the Rec Advisory Board on some things, like Cooking for Fields. I'm going to bring up the same thing I brought up with the, with the previous two boards is, you know, I'd really like to know that you guys are, as a board, are being involved and giving your thoughts and collaborating with those other boards around Redtail Ridge, and especially that northwest corner, and that, that collaboration of these wonderful things, right? Recreation, parks, public landscaping, open space, and how they all interplay there to be something really wonderful. We got presented a concept from the developers, and that's, I'm glad that, and they'll have to do some of that, they'll pay for a lot of it, but ultimately, it's up to us as a community, what we want there, what percentage of things they are, and, and so, and how they interplay with each other, and how they respect each other. But that's, that's the hard work that as a councilperson, I'm hoping that you all do with those other boards is that these three boards come together, if not more, boards come together to present a concept to council that's really thought through and, and, and knowing that council has to balance all those things. Like, you know, if you guys just come on your own and you say, this is the park that we want for that space, and OSAB comes on its own and says, this is what we want, then we're like, we're picking and choosing winners there. And I'd love that to be more collaborative before it gets to us. And so I'm just, you know, you know, putting, speaking that into the world is that, that's my expectation, is that this enormous new space that we have, that is being, you know, given to us, that we will be really thoughtful about how we use it. And I know there's conversation around, you know, pickleball or multi-use fields and other things that our community is asking for, and it seems like a great space from a noise issue and otherwise, a great space for lots of cool things. And, and then the, the last, and it's very repetitive for, for this group, but, you know, there's sort of, you know, concepts of more interplay, like, like a bike path that connects us to Lafayette, you know, I call it the Lola Loop, Louisville Lafayette. But that's, you know, connecting our parks and connecting, you know, all through there and working with another municipality, but working with those other boards again and working with, with council. So we've not given you direction to work on that. But just thinking about how we give you direction, what you guys are working on. You've done a great job with your presentation tonight, talking about how it, how it does interplay with our work plan. Maybe the best of all three boards, honestly. So congratulations to Abby, as I'm sure you put a lot of that work in. But it really, you did a really good job of showing the alignment between what you're doing and what our priorities are and how they match up. And so I really appreciate that. And it kind of feels like you guys have direction from us because you're implementing our work plan through the things you're doing. So thank you all for that. And I took up a lot of time, but I really, really appreciate your work.
We're doing questions now and then comments after public? Okay. So I'll do my, my questions now. I have three that came to mind. It might be more for staff, but I'll open it up to all four of you to jump in. So the first is, I want to make sure in some way your group's feedback is considered in the downtown vision plan because there is public landscaping components in that. I'm assuming you all are already actively part of that discussion?
Myself and our project manager, Parks Project Manager Brian Weber, participate actively in those and have been since the start of it. And so we're, we're continuing to do that and find the right end result to have the balance of landscaping downtown with what the events face or the spaces turn into.
Okay, and People Lab has pulled into that conversation as is appropriate?
As appropriate, they'll be, they'll be a part of it. There's not enough to bring in front of them yet, but.
Got it. That makes sense at this point.
Right now, it's just that the feedback's being staff-led, and then it will go to People Lab.
Wonderful. Thank you. The second is, when you were talking about collaborating with other boards, something that popped to my, in, in my mind was specifically the, the Arts and Culture Board because I feel like they've been having some conversations, I don't remember if it's on their work plan right now, of reimagining a community park event space. And I feel like that probably crosses, cross talks with you all as well. So I'm not saying it should be on an immediate work plan, that, you know, staff has this all under control, but I just wanted to make sure the connections were made there because it's a synergistic collaboration. Something that is more immediately on our work plan for council that I don't think I saw here, and I might be off, this might not be related, but the code rewrite popped in my mind, and specifically the park and public landscaping designation. And so I wanted to make sure there weren't any other parks and public space components in the code rewrite that we might need to make sure we have conversations about with this group. So don't need an answer, just wanted to throw it out there because it came, came to my mind. Those are my only, like, questions, I guess.
I assume you mean the development code? I mean, the idea is that coming out of the comprehensive plan, the city will look to revise and rewrite many of its development codes, which do include requirements for public landscape or landscaping. So a few little questions. One, I was curious, like generally speaking, what is planned for Memory Square, the playground or park?
It's been identified on our playground replacement program that it's just due for just a, a, a rehaul of, of the playground structure itself, not the play pit space, just an outfit like we did at Joe, Joe Carnival, more like Meadows, where we just replaced the aged playground equipment.
Or cottonwood?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then I'm curious, there was a, a public comment actually just before about whether the city should consider planting or adding to its list of trees that it typically plants, ones that are flowering and fruiting. I don't know if the board has given any consideration to that.
We have, it's kind of come and gone in little pieces. There's a lot of people that are anti, a lot of people that are for it. And I think that that definitely could be revisited at, at some time in the near future.
And I guess maybe one more question, which I again have been asking all night. I'm curious, you know, as a board, what do you hope to get out of the pros master plan?
So what Susan said kind of really overlaps with, with the way that People Lab feels and goes about things, right? So maintenance of our existing is, is really vital, enhancing and restoring habitats, native plants, pollinator, is something that's really big on our minds. Resilience and sustainability, sustainability is, I think, all of our top priority. I think, you know, along with the resilience is being responsible for our water in irrigating and plants that we plant. And so I think that kind of is where we are.
Thanks.
Public comments, is there anybody? Nobody? All right, we'll go back to council. Up again. Light touch. Yeah. There's, there's a lot on your work plan. And I guess I, I had a question about maybe whether it's doable. Have you, have you bitten off too much?
I, I would like to address that. So actually, I thought we went pretty light. When we were looking at all the things that we felt were important, we kept it to five main items that People have wanted to accomplish besides the, the projects and renovations, so that we could like allow time for those development, that type of thing.
So, yeah, all right. You know, I, I'm ever again amazed at the ambition of our boards and commissions. I, I don't ask everybody that, but I just, I looked through, and maybe it's just you have a lot of bullets underneath each of these. So it's, it's like, whoa. It just looks like a lot of, a lot of work, but I appreciate it.
On the full plan, they took it down to five, just as a visual aid.
Yeah, right. Well, that's good. That's all, that's all right. It's all good. Yeah. Councilmember.
Thank you. So a couple of cut things. Thanks for working on the, or coming up with ideas that you can bring forward for the entrance into Louisville, or at least one of our entrances into Louisville, which is not marked at McAslin. So it's, I'm very excited actually to, to see and hear your ideas and what came, what's going to come forward to us. When, the other thing I wanted to talk about is the Bee City slash the Pollinator. And I, although I really appreciate us encouraging this and encouraging more pollination in a lot of places, when we are working in some of these public, maybe not so much the parks, but the public land, places that are near bus stops for the kids, or near bus stops for RTD, if we can be mindful that there are a lot of members of the public that are actually allergic to bees and having flowering and like a real heavy congregation for the bees near where people have to stand for periods of time, especially children, there can be a lot of downside to that. And if they can at least be removed and far enough away from those public areas where people are being asked to specifically bee instead of a park where it's by choice, that's just my only recommendation. And I, I love the idea of adding trees that do the pollinating and fruit, but maybe it can be ones that don't create a lot of extra work for staff and drop fruit, but things like Hawthorne trees, which also prevent people from trying to touch them and climb them because they're not particularly hosting that. But they're great for birds, which we just found out from Open Space, they want, we want to be a bird city now. And, and they do flower, or, you know, the ornamental pears, things like that. That was my only comment about like fruiting and flowering trees is not creating additional work for our teams, whether that's parks or public works. So I appreciate everything, and it's, it's been really great. And I'm always excited when I see every staff and all of your advice on our parks. They're coming along splendidly. Joe Carnival is actually now one of my new favorite ones to take kids to. So it's, it's a lot of fun, and I can't wait to see what comes out of the upcoming parks. Thanks.
I did just want to mention that I believe that a memo was submitted on the signage from McAslin, so you should have that.
Yeah. It was submitted in 2024. We can, we can reference it again.
I I don't, I don't know. I.
No, there wasn't any approval. It was just a memo of recommendation out of People Lab to council.
I, I have, I have a different view about this. This is, it's maybe having seen these issues blow up multiple times in the past. Whenever we're talking about signage, it is a community-wide, very public kind of conversation that overlaps a whole bunch of different, you know, certainly like boards, certainly. And I, I remember, I remember the memo last year, and I remember other, I remember one chair of one commission who, her jaw dropped when she saw, you know, like, oh my gosh, we haven't begun to do this, and we have a lot of opinions about it, and it's really hugely important. And it was like, okay, timeout. I, and my, my recollection is typically, you know, especially when we're talking about gateway places, the amount of staff time that can be sucked into that is huge, especially if it's not really. especially if it's not really, really well coordinated. So I, I guess I'm, I'm hoping staff um sort of bubbles that up and considers it carefully before you know, we have different silos um coming up with different plans. Um, and then sort of aggravating others.
Is, is it coming, like, is, is the conversation that we had several years, sorry, is the conversation that we had several years ago with the community about signage throughout the whole city so that it was, there was consistency? Is that anything that is being planned to come back to the community? Because I know the whole project got just nixed and there were some concerns with a single image of a miner's hut or something. And so the whole project got stopped because of it and or something similar. And I was wondering if that's coming back because that might be a better opportunity for the big entry.
It may just be my PTSD about the whole thing. I, I mean, I honestly, it's, it's one of those things that, that, that people have had. It just needs to be coordinated and a hugely public process and that is not on our work plan. And it's an enormous lift for staff and it's an enormous amount of public engagement. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. There are other cities that have done this really wonderfully and well. Um, I just caution to, you know, getting too deep into that kind of thing before getting the feedback from staff particularly. Um, and I'm not looking forward to wading into it, but I mean, uh, eventually we will. I mean, we're doing that, they're gonna do that with respect to um front and center, the downtown vision plan. I mean, it's really important uh there and, you know, hopefully there'll be some coordination. I just uh, I'm just cautioning a little bit of, you know, take a breath and make sure that everybody is on the same page and moving forward or not. Um, because, you know, you just don't want to do a whole bunch of work and, and then run into the brick wall because somebody is telling you what I'm telling you way too late. Anyway, I, go ahead.
I'll say that when that project was first proposed, there was some backfire from other parts of the city who wanted a welcome to Louisville sign. So they're, they wanted one at thirty-six in McCaslin, uh, South Boulder Road in McCaslin, um, over by the, on forty-two, coming from Lafayette. Uh, they wanted one at forty-two going to onto Pine and that's not an entrance to the city. And, and they wanted one out by the tech center and.
Yeah, it is. Wait, here, here you go. See, you're seeing a play out, right?
See, but, but no, because Empire Road continues on past forty-two and it's still Louisville. Okay, that's going to be the problem is who gets what sign where and are they all the same? And, and what are we referencing? Are we referencing the mining? Or that we're a bee city and a tree city and maybe a bird city? So a lot of issues going on about that. But I would say that if you get to the point where you're going to proposing something to also uh consult with the cultural board because they have really good ideas on what it could look like. And funding.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief so we can get out on time. I really have um two categories of things that I, I'd just like to mention in my last few comments. The first is um the EDI lens. I think your group has a really, really unique opportunity to apply that lens where it just the directly impacts the community in a tangible way. And I've already seen some of the park um equipment be updated in a way where kids and families of all abilities can participate and I'm excited to see that continue. And I'm happy to see that in your slide deck today, you had that lens on multiple different items that you are currently or in the future will work on. The, the second thing I feel like we'd be remiss if we didn't address tonight is the budgetary concerns. And I will tell you as a member of finance committee, that is uh front of mind for us and we have it slated as an item that we're going to continue to look at. I feel very strongly that um the residents of Louisville were not fully aware of the impact to see had on our parks and we need to fix that. So you have um finance committee looking at that and very concerned about the future trends and trying to strategize ways um that we can help close that gap. With that being said, we heard OSAB tonight talk about to see in perpetuity. So I'm assuming that, you know, close conversations between the groups will be had. Because if that's the case, then I would imagine we need to rethink about what that potential impact would be for parks and if we need to approach the parks piece of that a little bit differently than we did in the past. So again, thank you very much for all of your work.
One more thing I was just thinking about was, um, well, first, thank you for what you're doing and staff. Um, and now it just went out of my head again. What, what were you? Oh, I know, I know, I know. It was the, the public landscaping section. Have we actually really located all of the parcels that are city-owned and not HOA loaned or owned?
Interesting. You should mention that. I've been doing some of that research and reached out to Boulder County today on a piece of property. So no, we have not identified all of the locations.
Okay.
Still is very much working. Closer, closer than when I, closer than when I started, but not done yet.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
It'll be a work in progress because I think when I think I'm done, we'll find more.
Right.
And as, as a, as a point of reference um to Mr. Cooperman's comment, um, there, there are two memos coming. I was waiting for the one I received today from P P Lab. And the other one is um P P Lab's comments regarding the last presentation that um staff member heard presented regarding the comp plan. So you'll be getting a, a further update of their collaborative answer um associated with that. Yep.
Um, other comments? You guys want to have the last word? Well, thank you for being here and thank you for doing what you're doing. And thank you for having the ambition to take on the pieces that you have. And thanks for following the um kind of the rubric that we were trying to get people to follow. Thanks.
Very good.
And taking on the role of the chair.
Um, do we have a uh motion?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
On favor?
Aye.